All right, let's call the meeting to order. Amy, can we do a roll call, please?
Yes, Mr. Defilia.
You're muted, Ed.
Oh, where'd you go?
You left.
You left his video. He clicked the wrong button.
Yeah.
Mr. Duffy. Dr. Fisher.
Here.
Ms. Close. She's logging back on. Mr. Weinstein. Mr. Defilia.
I'm here.
Okay. Mr. Beal.
You're.
Mr. Ades. Mr. Badnovich.
Here.
Mr. Carmonica. And Chairman Di Benedetto.
Here. Salute to the flag. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, to its public, for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. The notice of the requirements of the open public meeting law for this meeting has been satisfied. A copy of the notice has been sent to the Aspery Park Press, the Coaster, and filed in the Ocean Township Clerk on August 10, 2021. Word policy, no new cases will be started after 10:30 PM and no new testimony taken after 11:00 PM. All meetings will be video and audio tape and shown on the Township of Oceans Community Cable Channel, Channel 22 on Verizon FiOS and Channel 77 on Cable Vision. Resolution memorialization. Eden Koresh, Block 4, Lot 3, 44 Whale Pond Road, Ocean Minor Subdivision Approval, Bulk Variance Approval. Can I get a second to memorialize this?
I'll second.
Amy.
Mr. Defilia.
Yes.
Dr. Fisher.
Yes.
Ms. Close. Mr. Beal.
Yes.
Mr. Badnovich. Chairman Di Benedetto.
Yes.
Okay.
Lignum Development LLC, Block 65.
Chairman, before we do that, there was a second resolution, the Deal 35 amended resolution.
I don't have that.
It's on the, it is on the agenda right next to I.D.
I don't have that. Can you read it, please?
Sure. Basically, it's the same, it's the same, this is for the Deal 35 Land LLC, Block 33, Lot 1902. This is the revised amended site plan approval, Mr. Chairman. All this was the exact same resolution as the previous resolution. There was just a change in one line about it, about the tree having to be replaced.
Right.
Rad, the, the previous resolution indicated they had to replace a tree of the same caliper. And they don't, they just have, they have to replace, they have to add trees that equate up to that caliber.
That's correct.
And that was the only change in the resolution. It's exactly the same change, other than that one sentence.
I did see that, yes.
And it should be noted that the agreement was of, the, the trees are of the significance equal to. It's important that that's part of the language of the resolution.
Okay, I move to memorialize that. Give her a second.
I'll second.
Amy.
Sorry, Mr. Defilia.
Yes.
Ms. Close. Mr. Beal.
Enter your meeting ID, followed by.
There she is.
Yes.
Mr. Badnovich.
Yes, I'm here.
And Chairman Di Benedetto.
Yes. All right, so the first new case is Lignum Development LLC, Block 65, Lot 7, 721 Corley's Avenue, Ocean Zone, R dash four is an application subdivision, existing 26,000 square foot parcel into two 13 square foot lots, demolishing existing.
Enter your meeting ID, followed by.
Amy, please mute everyone. Except for the chair.
Demolish existing dwelling and constructing two new houses without variances. Attorney, the applicant is Greg F. Pastor.
Yes, and Mr. Chairman, before Mr. Pastor speaks, we just had one item of housekeeping. There was a notice issue wherein one of the residents within 200 feet lives at 26 Brunns Road, B.R.U.N.S. And when the notice went out, it went out to 26 Burns Road, B.U.R.N.S. We believe, and I've talked to Mr. Pastor, we believe it has been received in the post office recognized because there is no Burns Road in, in West Allenhurst or in Ocean Township. So we believe it's gone to the right place, but we don't have any card back. They notice on the, on the United States Postal Service website indicates that they left notice that the certified mailing. So, Mr. Pastor, I'm just gonna make sure for the record that if for some reason there is a noticing problem, you're still willing to proceed at your own risk this evening, because we believe that there isn't.
That's correct, thank you.
Okay, so the record will just note that. And then, Mr. Chairman, I have the following exhibits to mark into evidence. Exhibit A1 will be the minor subdivision plan dated January 25, 2022. Exhibit A2 will be the Monmouth County Review Committee Review Letter, March 28, 2022. Those are the exhibits from the applicant. And then I have the following exhibits on behalf of the board. Exhibit B1, as in Board One, will be the Board Engineers Report dated June 17, 2022. Exhibit B2 will be the Board Planners Report dated June 15, 2022. Exhibit B3 will be the Fire Marshals Report dated June 1, 2022. And those are the exhibits that I have, Mr. Chairman. So, Mr. Pastor, if you just want to put your appearance on the record?
Yes, thank you. It's Greg F. Pastor, that's spelled P as in Peter, A.S.T. as in Thomas, E.R. My office is in Englewood Cliffs, New Jersey, and I represent Lignum Development LLC, the applicant for this subdivision application.
Very good. Mr. Higgins, could you summarize your report, please?
Let me just swear, Mr. Higgins and Bennett.
Mr. Higgins, you're muted.
Do all of, do all the board professionals swear that any testimony they'll give this evening will be the truth, the whole truth, nothing but the true self and God?
I do.
I do.
Thank you both.
Okay, yeah, I will summarize. Basically, it's a 26,000 square foot lot. They're subdividing into two 13,000 square foot, there will be vacant building lots. They're removing three structures on the site, a residence, a shed, and a garage, all of which are non-conforming in terms of setbacks. So they're eliminating a number of non-conformities, creating two fully conforming lots. The only questions I have is that there are two stone pillars on either side of Ivy Place. It appears that they're not on the subject site, but it's, I want to confirm that and want to make sure that any, if there is a resolution of approval, it states that those pillars should not be disturbed. They're apparently well over 100 years old and have some significant historical significance in the area. And it should also be noted that there's no development proposed at the time, so that there is no tree removal being proposed. And I recommend that a condition of approval be that any tree removal requirements or replacement requirements in effect at the time of site development be implemented.
Okay.
And we would stipulate the same, Mr. Chairman.
Okay.
Bennett, Mr. Matlock, do you have any, can you summarize your report?
Yes, thank you, Mr. Chairman. Just a couple of quick things. I, I'd just like the applicant to discuss the timing of the building demolition. The existing building is bisected by the proposed lot line. So I think that just needs to be discussed and how they're going to access Lot 7.02. Currently, the property is being accessed off Ivy Place and the, the new, the proposed plan shows proposed trees being planted along Corley's Avenue. So I just want to clarify whether a driveway access between the trees or how that's gonna work. And then proposed monuments should be shown on the subdivision plan and a detail for, for those monuments as well.
I, I can address those comments, Mr. Chairman. The existing home and out structures will be demolished before the subdivision is perfected. That is before the subdivision deeds are recorded. The, it's just a matter at this point of finalizing the utilities. I believe gas and water have been turned off, we're just waiting for electric. And so once that's done, we will make the, the application for demolition permit. And my understanding is, and I'll have the owner testify, that access to the, I believe it's the Easterly Lot, the one that borders Ivy, will have its driveway on Ivy.
Okay, do you have any professionals?
I have, Mr. Chairman. I believe we have Mr. Samanti, our engineer, is here.
Yes.
And if he can be sworn, he can go through the, the details of the subdivision plan with you.
Beautiful.
Mr. Samanti?
Yeah, hi.
Hi. Oh, there you are. Okay, I see you. You're on Christine's iPhone. Hey, Kristi, do you swear testimony you're about to give will be the truth, the whole truth, nothing but the true self, you got?
Yes, I do.
I just state your name for the record.
Charles Sermont. S U R M O N T E.
Great, thank you. And you are a licensed engineer, State of New Jersey?
Yes, I am.
Thank you very much.
Welcome.
I trust Mr. Sermont's qualifications are known to the board, and he doesn't have to be further qualified as an expert in engineering.
That's okay, we're good.
Okay, great. All right, Mr. Sermont, would you please, for the board and for the record, describe the subject premises at 721 Corley's Avenue?
Before you start, can you put up, do you have a photo?
I can share, yeah.
Well, Mr. Samont describes.
Am I gonna do it, or is?
I'm unable to.
Okay, I, I can, I think I can do it. Okay, can everybody see that?
Thank you.
Okay, you're welcome.
You ready for me?
Yes, please, go ahead.
That, that, that exhibit is the minor subdivision plan, absent the key map that, maybe some of you have a copy with you that has the key map that shows the location of the property. Most of you probably know Ivy Place is immediately east of Millwood Farm and just half a block west of Monmouth Road, fronting on Corley's. So, fronting on Corley's, we have 250 feet and a depth of 104 feet. As Mr. Higgins indicated, we're, we're proposing to subdivide the property into two equal 13,000 square feet, square foot lots, 125 foot in width and 104 feet in depth. We intend on working within the setback requirements of the R4 zone. We plan on meeting the maximum building and lot coverage within the R4 zone. The lay of the land is such that the property slopes slightly toward Corley's Avenue and Ivy Place, so that there should be, once development occurs, there should be no impacts to the adjoining neighbors as far as, as far as drainage goes. And yes, I believe, as Mr. Pastor indicated, we'll be accessing Lots 701 from, most likely from Ivy Place and 702, obviously from Corley's Avenue. The, the pillar or pier that Mr. Higgins indicates is shown on the plan at the most southwesterly corner of the property, right below Pipe Found, there's a notation for a pier. So that's technically in the county right of way. I don't think the county had any comments regarding it. But I believe unless Mr. Pastor corrects me that the intent is to maintain that pier in its present condition, in its present location.
Yes, that's my understanding. And with respect to your, your understanding of the intended plans, the, these lots can both accept a conforming residential home without any variances, correct?
That's correct.
Okay, and with regard to the comments that you heard from the board's professionals, is there any reason why the applicant cannot conform with all of those?
The applicant can conform with all of those.
Mr. Chairman, that's all I have for Mr. Samont. This is a fairly straightforward application. If the board has any questions, I'm sure Mr. Samont will be happy to answer.
So my, my, my question was about the, during the demo, there will not be any trees removed, correct?
I would have to ask the owner, I don't believe that there'll have to be any removed. But I want to confirm that with him.
Okay, is the owner here?
He is.
Hello, ladies and gentlemen. You know, when it comes to trees, I understand and respect. Ordinances, so we will comply with the.
If you're gonna have to be sworn in. Oh, sorry. So, do you want to finish with Mr. Samont first, or do you want to hear from Mr. Gutt?
Uh, just, let's have Mr. Gutt just say what he has to say, and then, and then we can open up questions to both.
Okay. All right, sir, do you, do you swear testimony you're about to give will be the truth, the whole truth, nothing but the true self, you got?
I do.
And just state your name for the record?
James Gutt.
And you are the sole member of the LLC?
I am.
All right, thank you. Please, please proceed.
So with, with regard to the demolition, the intended demolition of the existing structure, do you have a feel for whether any trees will have to be removed from the property for the demolition?
My understanding is we will have to address the trees on site. We have an expert that has already been retained, and we will proceed in accordance with the town's wishes in order to remove some of the unsafe ones and replace as needed.
Okay, and then you heard about, you heard the testimony about entering on the, I guess that's the Western Lot from Ivy Place. Is that, is that your intention as developer?
Yes, the, the existing curb cut can be utilized at Ivy, and then we're gonna introduce a curb cut along Corley's.
Okay. And is, is your intention to build two similar homes, approximately the same size and dimensions, all within the, the existing setback mandates and bulk requirements?
Yes, the existing, well, the, the proposed building envelopes will be within the intended setbacks. Whether or not the existing building at 720 could be maintained and, and remodeled is something worth addressing, but it doesn't, you know. Like, for instance, if, if my, if my structure could be modified to be within the 30-foot rear setback, and then the front part of it brought back to, you know, to within compliance, I imagine that's within a remodel scope that's acceptable.
Well, the, the, the board asked before about demolition, and it was my, my understanding that you had demolition proposed, or at least in process, is that?
Sure, yeah, we're, I mean, the, the gas line has been clipped. You know, the water has been shut off. All that remains is electric. I just want, I'm just curious as to whether or not we have to take down the entire structure or just what is within the encroachment.
So my understanding is the condition of approval is going to be that all structures come down.
Okay, then we take them down.
Okay, fair enough. I think that's all I have for Mr. Gutt. Board can go ahead and ask any questions that they have.
First off, I, as, does Jim or Bennett have any questions for either one of the, the professional or Mr. Gutt?
No, I don't have any questions. I just have one comment clarification in that the access off of Ivy Place to that corner lot, it has to be off of Ivy Place unless a variance is granted, because the ordinance requires that the access be off the street of lower classification on a residential corner lot. And Corley's is a, it's a collector's street, and Ivy Place is a typical minor street, so it would have to come over Ivy Place.
Yeah, that, that is the plan and the intent.
I understand that. I just want to put that on the record.
Good, thank you.
And also to go on the record, gentlemen, these homes will be different in look, correct? I mean, we have some people that were coming in that wanted all-white homes, you know, for a six-block subdivision, so they'll be significantly different.
Yes, if you reference my past work, I never create the same thing twice.
Thank you.
We have any questions from the board? For either one of these gentlemen?
Mr. Chairman, I have a quick question for Mr. Gutt. The, the proposed trees that you have shown on there, is that intended to be like a tree compensation for the trees that you're, you said you might have to remove? Or is that just there?
I'm under the guidance of, of the township when it comes to the trees. I, I do understand that they're, well, this is new for me in this area where trees would be proposed after a subdivision, so I would need some interpretation as to the number for tree removal policy and how it applies here. But we're, we know, as always, I'm willing to work with my municipality to get it right.
Yeah, the way it works is that these are required street trees, but they can be used towards, counted towards replacement of any trees that are being removed from the site. And depending upon the size of the tree, it depends upon the request, the, the replacement, how much is counted towards replacement.
Yeah, we'll, we'll obviously work with the township engineer with whatever requirements are and, and whatever the, the species required and, and so forth, so that won't be an issue.
A tree expert was already retained for this site and has done a report. Zig Panic, I believe, has experience with, with this process, so I know that there has been a little bit of change in the ordinance, and we're just going to comply with whatever changes took place most recently.
Do, is there a tree report for us to see?
There will be now that we have a subdivision.
I believe we did file, I believe we did file a report on this, for the trees. Let me just bear with me one second. That's the removal report that I believe was, was submitted with the application.
So you have a tree removal report?
That's, yeah, it's on the screen now.
Jim, can you clarify what they're talking about?
No, I can't. I, I didn't see a tree removal report.
It wasn't, if the board members don't have it, it wasn't part of the original application.
All right, and then I apologize, then that was my mistake. But obviously, there are some, and some of the trees are gonna be right where the new buildings are gonna go and things of that nature. But obviously, as we said, we'll, we'll comply with all, all the township's requirements and work with the engineer to be sure that everything is, is done in compliance.
So, so how many trees are you removing?
Jay, do you have a feel for that off the top of your head?
You know, I'm, I'm going to operate with the basic premise of anything large or dying that is at or near these setback building envelopes is what we would go for. And then a, you know, replacement protocol within the township's statute and shade tree commission request is what we will comply with.
So you don't have an exact number?
We, you know, we have, we've maintained the tree expert, and we will proceed. However, in the, you know, there, there was an attempt to do a removal on the existing site, just for stuff that we deemed unsafe. And then the representative in township said that that was gonna be put on hold until after the subdivision plan. So we are on hold until we hear back as to what the requirements are. It's not an exact science, from what I understand.
Jim, can you win?
I, I think the thing is that there is an ordinance in place that governs it, and they have to comply with that ordinance. And I think that should be a condition of approval, which is what I said. And it's a little bit too early at this point to try and say exactly what's going to be done. And even the, the plans show a number of trees, but I can't tell if any, how many of those trees are qualifying trees in terms of qualified, requiring qualification for replacement.
Yeah, we have no problem with that condition of approval.
Okay. Does anyone else have any questions? From the board?
Yeah, Mr. Chairman, I just wanted to make a comment, but it sounds like we've sort of discussed this. I just wanted to let, you know, on the record that we have, just recently, the town council's recently updated tree ordinance. It is in effect at, at this time, so it, you know, I would just make sure that everybody, make sure they read it and understand, because it is more comprehensive than the old ordinance.
Understood.
Okay.
All right, do we have any questions? We'll close the, let's see if anybody from the public have any questions.
I have a question.
You have to state your name and your, your address, and then.
My name's Joan Brown. I live at 505 Ivy Place.
Okay.
Ms. Brown, I'm gonna swear you in, okay? Do you, do you swear testimony you're about to give will be the truth, the whole truth, nothing but the true self, you got?
Yes.
Thank you very much. Go ahead.
Um, I don't really need to testify, just had a question. In terms of the, both the demolition and the construction, Ivy Place is a very narrow road. And recently, we've had a lot of dumpsters and trucks going through that have had trouble getting through those two pillars and have actually knocked down a street sign. Is there any way that there can be an access, a construction access from Corley's? Or they can somehow figure out a way to get onto the property without going through that, that narrow entrance with the two pillars? Like coming from Myrtle or Palmer?
I, I think that's a little premature to, to make a commitment on at this time. I, I think we would have to be guided by what the building department recommends and allows. I, we, we don't even have actual construction plans drawn yet. This is simply to, to divide the lot in half. And I think all those details will be worked out. I, I think it's probably more practical to have staging off of Corley's, given the problems that you, that you've pointed out. But I don't think we can make that commitment 100% tonight.
Okay.
The condition of approval that those pillars not be damaged should be put into any resolution of approval. And then in looking at the demolition and the construction, if it appears that they're going to be in the way, then I think there would have to be an alternative construction access and demolition access.
Yeah, obviously, we'll, you know, we'll do whatever we've got to do to protect the pillars as, as a condition. And more than likely, as I said, it's probably more practical to stage off of Corley's anyway, because it's, it's wider and easier for trucks and, and construction vehicles to access.
Okay, that's, that was my only question.
Thank you.
Anyone else from the public have any questions? Okay. Let's close the public hearing.
Unless there's anything else from the board members, Mr. Chairman, that's all I have to present. Obviously, you know, the subdivision is essentially as of right. There's no, no other relief being sought. The construction plans and all of, all those details will be submitted to the building department for permits. And obviously, my client will, will, you know, comply with all the local and county and state requirements for such construction. So with that, unless there are any other questions, as I said, I will rest and ask the board to act favorably on this application.
Okay. All right, so, Mr. Lexteen, so we're gonna, we're gonna write that we're gonna move for a conditional approval based on the trees and no damage to the pillars, correct?
Well, it's not a, right, those are your conditions. It's an approval, but the conditions are that there'll be no damage to the trees, and they're gonna follow all the tree ordinances.
Correct. And we're not gonna damage the pillars.
They're not gonna damage the pillars. They're gonna demolish the existing structures. They're not going to damage the pillars. They're going to demolish the existing structures. Um, and we, there was one, right, I think those were all the, uh, conditions. That's what I have.
Okay. So I move to.
And also one more, that the homes will not be identical in architecture.
Okay. Very good. I move to, uh, approve this. Uh, can I have a second?
I'll second.
Amy, can we have a roll call, please?
Sir DeFilia?
Yes.
Dr. Fisher?
Yes.
Mrs. Close? Mr. Beal?
Yes.
Mr. Badnovich?
Yes.
Chairman Di Benedetto?
Yes.
Okay.
Well, thank you all very much. I appreciate your time and consideration, and we look, uh, forward to working with the township of Ocean to, uh, improve this property.
Look.
All right. Thanks very much. Have a good night.
All right. Our next case is WG Apartments, D E L L C Block two one six lot twenty one and twenty two fifteen fifteen Allen Avenue, Ocean Zone R dash. This is an application for a minor set site plan approval to legalize an existing fenced area used for dog play area and install a new playground on an existing apartment complex. Ms. Krimko, welcome.
Good evening, Mr. Chair. How are you? And members of the board, Jennifer Krimko from the Law from Avancé Grimmon Aaron, here on behalf of the applicant.
And, and Ms. Krimko, before you start, let me just mark in the exhibits that I have. Uh, Exhibit A one will be the survey of the property dated December fifteenth, twenty twenty one. Exhibit A two will be the site plan dated April twenty second, twenty twenty two. Those are the only exhibits I have from the applicant.
I just, I just have one more exhibit that I'll share, and it's just a photo of the subject property as a three.
Okay. Photo of property, photo of property. Thank you. And then as far as the board exhibits, I have Exhibit B one is in Board one is the Board Engineers Report dated June seventeenth, twenty twenty two. Exhibit B two will be the Board Planner's Report dated June twentieth, twenty twenty two. Exhibit B three will be the Crime Prevention Report dated June sixth, twenty twenty two. Exhibit B four will be the Traffic Safety Report dated June second, twenty twenty two. And Exhibit B five will be the Fire Marshal's Report dated June first, twenty twenty two. And those are all the exhibits.
Okay, Ms. Krimko, do you mind if I, uh, take the lead here?
No, of course not. I would, I would welcome it.
Okay. Mr. Higgins, can you do your report, your summarize report, please?
Let me just swear in, Mr. Higgins and, and Mr. Malik. Do you swear that a testimony the two of you will give this evening will be the truth, the whole truth, nothing but the truth, help me God?
I do.
I do.
Thank you both.
Okay. Mr. Higgins?
Yeah, I, I will summarize. Basically, this is a apartment complex at the end of Allen Street. Uh, it has five buildings and it abuts commercial uses to the south and west vacant land to the north, which I believe is environmentally sensitive, so it probably will not be developed. And then the, the former, or the former Hillel School Site, which is now township owns to the east. Um, what they're proposing to do is to legitimize a fenced in area, and it's literally just a square fenced in area that is utilized for dog play. And there's no, absolutely no variances associated with that, and to create a, uh, play area for children. And what that does because of the way that they're proposing to do it with a concrete base that has, uh, has materials above it to soften the impact, that increases the impervious coverage of the site because of the concrete space, even though it's completely below ground. And the impervious coverage as it exists is ninety seven point three percent of the buildable lot area. It's being improved to ninety eight point nine percent of the buildable lot area. And the reason it's so high is that the entire site, because of the way the ordinance is written, is required to have a fifty foot buffer around the entire site. And that fifty foot buffer area is subtracted from the area of the site, which requires, which, which reduces the buildable lot area significantly and makes it looks like the impervious coverage is almost the whole site, which it really isn't. Um, I don't have a problem with it. From a planning standpoint, the new impervious coverage is totally underground and not visible. They could make this playground without that concrete base, and it would be a little bit, it would be less, more, it would be more difficult to maintain. And I think it's a much better solution to have the concrete base so that it is, it's something that's more substantial and doesn't have to be maintained constantly.
Okay. And Mr. Matlock?
Hey, Mr. Chairman, uh, I, I had also noted about the impervious coverage, but, uh, Jim handled that, uh, nicely. Uh, I did have a, a note that the applicant should verify if, uh, there are curb ramps, uh, handicap accessible curb ramps, uh, near the, uh, those sidewalk connections to the western parking lot. Uh, if there's no curb ramps are present, uh, the applicant should include an ADA compliant curb ramp and some construction details. Uh, and I, I did see the, uh, photo that, that Ms. Krimko planned to, uh, share with the board tonight. It looks like, uh, there's a handicap parking stall near there, so I, I think, uh, some ADA accessible, uh, ramps are, are warranted.
Okay. Ms. Krimko?
Thank you. And I can just start by saying, yes, we will install the curb, uh, we'll install the handicap ramp uh, and provide the details, uh, for it. And we'll also comply with Mr. Matlock asking for the detail for the rubber mulch for the playground section. So with that, I'd like to introduce Patrick Ward, Licensed Engineer, Professional Planner, have him sworn and have him quickly walk through what we're proposing. I don't think there's a whole lot to add more than what, uh, Jim and Ben have already, uh, added, but we'll, we'll get the testimony on the record.
Okay, go.
Mr. Ward?
Good evening. How you doing?
Yes.
Thank you.
All right. Do you swear a testimony you're about to give will be the truth, the whole truth, nothing but the truth, help me God?
I do.
And just state your name for the record?
Patrick Ward with Insight Engineering.
And you are a licensed planner and engineer and testifying in both capacities this evening?
Licensed professional engineer and professional planner in the state of New Jersey. Yes.
Thank you very much.
And, and Dr. Di Benedetto, this board has accepted him in the zoning board multiple times. We submit him as an expert.
Okay.
Thanks. So I'm going to share my screen and show you what is, um, a three in evidence, and, and just to reference before we start going with the plan, you can see this fenced area currently in the foreground. And then the open area, excuse me, in the front, uh, where the proposed playground is. And then here's the handicap accessible spot that Mr. Matlock referenced. So with all of that, I will turn it over to Ben. Uh, I'm sorry, I'll turn it over to Pat and have him walk you through what's proposed.
Sure. Thanks, Ms. Krimko. So, um, as the board and its professionals have already, uh, kind of introduced the application, we're seeking to legalize that existing fenced in area that's used for the dog play. Um, and we're also proposing the, the proposed, uh, fence area just to its south of the dog play area. Um, it is a, you know, modest, uh, footprint, um, just under two thousand square feet of a mulched area with a, uh, flexible curb that'll keep the mulch in. Um, there's a proposed four foot black chain link fence surrounding that. That'll match the four foot black chain link fence that's around the dog play area that we're seeking to have legalized. Um, we're proposing, uh, a concrete walkway from the existing sidewalk to the new playground. Uh, and we're proposing trash receptacles at both entrances to the dog play area and to, uh, the playground. Um, like, we testify what Ms. Krimko, uh, agreed to will provide a ADA accessible ramp at the, um, where the handicap stall is. And, um, yeah, that, that's basically it. Um, the coverage did increase slightly because of the playground footprint. Um, but as Mr. Higgins testified to, it's, it's, you know, the, the, the number so high due to the buffer, um, that surrounds the property.
Pat, as a professional planner, is the benefit of providing these recreational spaces, which is recognized as a purpose of zoning for this existing, um, apartment complex, does that outweigh any negatives that there could possibly be realized by the board granting this approval?
Yes, purpose of planning G, I think, is the perfect purpose for this. It's, uh, providing sufficient space and appropriate locations for recreational use to serve New Jersey citizens, um, particularly those residing here. Um, as Mr. Higgins, uh, stated to the, like, really on all sides, there are no sensitive receptors. Um, we're surrounded by commercial or undeveloped land, so really there are no impacts we're proposing.
Uh, Dr. Di Benedetto, that's all I have unless there are questions.
Any questions from the board?
Uh, I have, I have a quick question. Is the playground ADA accessible?
It, to answer that, there's a two, oh, it's a two parts. Um, based on the agreement to provide the handicap accessible ramp at the stall that's existing, um, it is accessible to the entrance to the playground. The playground itself is not inclusive in design. Um, I think that's where the question you're, you're going with. It is, that currently not designed as an inclusive playground.
Okay. Um, uh, Mr. Chairman, I actually have a, a comment, less of a question, and this is more for, for Ron and Ben than for the applicant. Um, but I just want it on the record. You know, Ben, in, in your report, you noted that this is not in the flood hazard area. I just want to state on the record that there is a really weird gap in the FEMA flood maps. It's not, not in the flood hazard area. It's beyond the limit of study. There's wetlands and a stream that run behind that property. And FEMA draws the line on the flood hazard area right in front of fifteen fifteen Logan Road, which that area gets very wet in floods. So I am deeply concerned that there is a gap in our flood maps in town from FEMA, which again, not something the applicant can do anything about, but I just feel very strongly that this is a concern for the town, especially as the town looks to redevelop properties in that area. And this is the first applicant that's come in that particular neck of the woods. So just want to get that on the record.
Okay, uh, that, that's a, a, that valid, uh, concern, and, and I appreciate you bringing that up. And I'll ask, uh, Mr. Ward, uh, is there any, uh, intent for grading and adding fill in uh, the area of the playground, or is the, are the grades to stay the same?
This is proposed at existing grade, no grade changes.
Thank you.
Any other questions from the board? Any questions from the public? All right. We can close the, uh, hearing. And, um, Mr. Lexstein? There you are. Get all confused with all these, uh, boxes here. Got to find you where you are. You moved. We got, uh, so we have, uh, the, uh, just the handicap curb, uh, ramp, correct? As to what, uh, what we got here. So I make an approval. I, I make a motion to approve this application with the, uh, condition that we're going to get the curb ramp on the handicap spot. Can I have a second?
I'll second.
We have a roll call, Amy?
Mr. DeFilia?
Yes.
Dr. Fisher?
Yes.
Mrs. Close? Mr. Beal?
Yes.
Mr. Badnovich?
Yes.
And Chairman Di Benedetto?
Yes.
Thank you, everyone. Have a great night.
You too. So our next meeting is July twenty fifth. I don't know if everyone knew that. And, uh, I close the, uh, our meeting tonight. Can everybody say hi? Happy Fourth of July. Thank you.
Thank you, everyone, for your time.
Yes, we'll see you on, see you in July.
Thank you, everyone.